We'll do the pledge allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
How about the minutes from last meeting? Anybody need anything changes on it? Was everything okay? It seemed okay to me.
All moves that the ministry accepted as written. I seconded.
All approved, all in favor?
Aye.
Date of next meeting, June 13th? Okay, what, did we skip July or August?
Last year was August.
August, okay.
What is the date of next meeting?
June 13th.
Same time?
No.
Oh, we're doing.
Correspondents, George.
The only one we got was.
Um, we need to reorganize the board.
Is that next?
Yeah, that's.
All right, first of all, Polly, do you know everybody?
Um, no.
Sue.
Bonnie, because I've heard of her.
Bonnie, George, Don, Laura, Paul.
Well, thank you for your email. Okay, I got it.
Welcome.
Thank you. I'm gonna try it backwards.
Okay, we have to elect chairman and vice chairman?
Yes.
And secretary.
And secretary. Any volunteers for chairman?
I was gonna nominate Don for chair.
And I was gonna second that.
Okay, I'll accept it. I'll do one more here.
Okay, and that gives other people a chance to think about whether they want to do it next year.
And vice chair?
I was gonna nominate Laura.
All those in favor? Good?
Uh, who seconded that?
I did.
Okay.
All in favor? Aye. And secretary? Who's the secretary? Oh, I nominate Polly. I can't nominate.
I'll nominate Polly.
Okay. All those in second?
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Now we can move on to correspondents.
You have to take the vote.
Oh, all in favor?
Yes. Sorry.
So it would be the motion would be, or wants to make the motion would be to accept the slate of nominees as presented to the board.
I'll make that, what George just said.
I seconded.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Very good.
We're learning some of this, Polly, isn't it?
Next month we'll have an introduction to Robert's 101.
Uh, correspondence.
Uh, we did receive a thank you letter and donation from the Friday Women's Club that's been meeting here through the fall and winter. They are now taking their summer hiatus. In the past, they used to meet in people's houses that were members of the club, but they were meeting here due to COVID. They didn't feel comfortable meeting in somebody's house. We're hoping that they come back in the fall because they've been lovely and they give us food. We understand that if they choose to go back to their old method of meeting in houses, we do. But we want them to come back.
They did during the day, right?
Yeah, it was Thursday afternoons at two-ish, I believe.
They ran that one or two.
But yeah, they had the best, oh, they left the absolute best Boston cream pie I've ever had. That was amazing.
What was the group, George?
The Friday Club.
Okay.
Friday Club on Thursday?
Yes. If you'd like to ask the next question, I love this story. Go for it.
Why?
I asked this, and apparently this club has actually been meeting socially since the late 19th century. It's not just people from Westport, it's from this whole area. And apparently back in the 1890s, early 1900s, some of the well-to-do set, they started meeting on Fridays, but there was a problem with some of the ladies who had tickets and, you know, subscriptions to go see the symphony up in the city, which was on Fridays. So to allow for travel to the city, they moved it to Thursdays. And they've been meeting on Thursdays, even though it's a Friday club, for the last hundred some odd years.
Never thought to change the name.
Nope. So I absolutely love that. Some of their lovely, all of them real peaches, and like I said, gave us food. And me being the Portuguese descended individual that I am, you give me food, I'm your friend for life. We hope they come back and they can give us a very nice donation out of thanks for using the space that we'll be putting towards the book budget.
And what was the information, George?
Uh, $2.50.
Very good. Any other correspondence? Directors' report.
So you have April in front of you in your meeting package. You go through there. So for the month of April, the circulation dipped from last year. We're basically at the same point we were last year for circulation for the month of April. So I wish it was higher, but at least it's equal to what it was last year, so I can live with that. The number that I was really excited about is the total registered patron count went up to 4,699 with the 42 registrations we had in April. So we're almost at 4,700, which is cool. I almost fudged it and stuck one more in there, but I thought that would be naughty, so I didn't. But I have to admit, I did think about it. Technology assistance is continuing to increase. We have more people coming in for help with different items, for using the computers or for getting set up for eBooks on their devices, which we're happy to do, but you know, it is time consuming on the staff. So as we watch that increase, we'll keep it closely under monitor.
How do you monitor that?
Just keeping an eye on how much time people are spending off the desk. And then it's basically right now, we have, I have the staffing set up so that it's shiftable. We start off with having usually two people on the desk, one person off the desk working on different projects, and then one person kind of floating between where things need to be. So it's able to shift and adjust to where we need the most help. So if we have to have two people working with people on technological devices at the same time, we can do it. It's just a matter of changing it around.
Is the whole staff trained to do that?
Not all of them. We have some who are trained for different devices. So depending on what needs to be done, some people are more comfortable with Apple devices, some people are more comfortable with Android or Samsung devices, and then some people are better with the computers and searching and Ancestry. So it depends on the issue.
Does sales help with the training, or is this totally in-house?
Yeah, that's not, some, sales helps train the staff in using the library side stuff. So for like doing cataloging or using the computers to check people in and check people out. Everything that we do that's technological oriented, like using computers, public computers, using the Ancestry website, helping people check books in and out through Libby or Hoopla, that's all us, although they do make some flyers available for Libby and Hoopla. But, good question. And then hopefully next, this coming month, we should have a pop in registrations as our first grade friends from across the road come over. So that'll be very exciting, and we're looking forward to seeing their little faces.
Get their first card?
Yep. So it's a good time. But we did see a little bit of dip in April with the, you know, weather increasing in niciness. But hopefully it'll go back up next month. We'll see how it goes.
Now, George, does the meeting room use usually go down in the summer?
We're gonna have to wait and see. Last summer was irregular, so we're still kind of coming out of COVID. So it usually is kind of the same for year through because most of the groups that we have, other than the Girl Scouts and Boy Scouts, well, not Boy Scouts, just Girl Scouts, kind of go straight through. But then the big problem with us is once we get to August and September, then we see a dip in meeting room uses because the room's tied up with the book sales.
What about the outdoor space that we have? Are people aware that they can use the amphitheater?
We haven't been reserving it, but we have been letting people know. So so far, the only group that's actually used it is the writing group.
Well, we can document that? As use?
It should be documented, same as you used to have for a room like this. I think we should have a flyer out there letting people know about it as they come in.
Yeah.
It would make us look good.
Just because of the access issue, we haven't been really doing that too much because then you get into the whole having to get down in there business. But so far, that's the only group that has used it to date. Other than, we did have some children's programings out there, obviously, which those we did count as kids programs. I can't remember if we actually, if I counted meeting, I have to go back and check if we counted that last year. I'm not sure. Yeah, I think they only did it one time. The problem was that group got too big. There actually wasn't enough seating out there for them. So it was kind of a belter for that.
We're sorry.
That's okay. Good question. The children's programming attendance is going really good. Hopefully they'll continue. We are probably gonna go through two weeks, I think, this week and next week before we take a break.
Yeah, and then it's the, it gets the next week, the first graders.
So then we're gonna do a whole week of the kids coming over, and then we're gonna take about a six-week break before we start up with the winter, summer programming for the kids. Murderers Mondays, we're still holding steady at 18 people a meeting, which I found exceedingly hilarious because for February, March, and April, all three meetings, although it wasn't the same people, we still had 18 people every month for, so we'll see. This one was a rough book, so I'm not sure how many people we're gonna have tonight because it went harder than I thought it was going to when I, we picked it. So probably gonna be like six of us.
Is it like a book club?
Yep, so we have a mystery and thriller book club that meets the second Monday of the month at 6:00. I've been very encouraged by the attendance, so it's been, we have 18 people have been coming, and we actually have 27 people on paper who are signed up as part of the club. Not all come every month, obviously, and some do tap out depending on the book, which is fine. But that's the funny thing, is every month it's been 18 people regardless of anything else. So it's, I'm very happy with that. But we'll see what happens tonight.
That's a big group to kind of get a book club conversation, 18.
Yeah, the conversation is the easy part. The hard part is trying to find a book that, you know, dots the i's and t's for everyone. And especially because we've been picking, you know, I've been picking books that I haven't read before. So it's kind of rolling the dice, and the last couple of books were a little rougher than what some of the ladies in the group prefer, so. I read the, I read the reviews, I read the blurbs, it sounds like it's a good book, and then you read into it, and then they're like, you know, cutting things off and sticking things places. I'm just gonna walk into the meeting and I'm gonna be like, "I'm sorry, I didn't know, the Bones TV show is not like the book." I bet.
Is it a different book a month, or if I?
Every month we read a different book, and then we talk about it at the next meeting. And it's been great, so I know we've stolen Bonnie's and Amy's mothers are now both parts of the group, too. So all of you are welcome as well.
What's the book?
Tonight we're discussing Deja Dead, which is the first book in the Temperance Bones, Temperance Brennan book series, which is the inspiration for Bones, the TV show. And the book and the TV show are almost completely different. So I gotta tell you, reading the book, I wanted to shoot her a couple of times because she is not enjoyable as a character, but I digress. To hear anything more about my rants about the book, you'll have to come to me.
Moving on.
Moving on, staff. Bonnie is now officially promoted and started and going wonderfully and has taken over all the children's programming, which.
Very good. And that leaves you.
Yes, which I was spending about somewhere between six and eight hours a week doing the kids' programming, so it's very much a nice burden off of me to be giving on to her. Dan Sheehan has been received and appointed by the selectmen now. So today is actually his first day as a full bird, like, principal clerk, which we will have him come in in a couple moments to say hi and all that good stuff. And then we do have his now vacant part-time, part-time, to type over there, apologize. Library position, suffice it to say, we have a much better crop of applicants for the library aid position than we did for the principal clerk position, which is disappointing, but it's a good thing. So I'll probably wait till the end of this week, and then Bonnie and I will go through the applications and start selecting people to interview. It probably, with the applications and the resumes we've already gotten, probably won't take that very long because we have some very good, very strong applicants in this pool as opposed to the last one.
That would be for Dan's previous position.
So that's the variable library aid position, which is 10 to 19 hours a week. And I usually have them set at 15, and it is minimum wage, so.
Okay.
Desk coverage last month was a little bit difficult to work.
Is that because of Linda leaving?
Well, it was Linda leaving, and then just trying to cycle through. Then Bonnie and Amy and I are still trying to finish off the last of our vacation time to try and keep all of that straight. But the staff did step up, and the part-timers were willing to move their schedules around to accommodate holes in our schedule as much as we could, so it was very good. The minimum expenditure requirement for our certification next year has been met. Right now, we're tracking to clock in around six, seven, or eight, maybe 10,000 over the minimum expenditure due to the extra donations we got from the friends. But that's about normal for us. Personally, I like to try to get it as close to that minimum as we can to save money for next year. So we're slowly trying to cycle down.
What is that minimum?
So the minimum expenditure is the amount we have to spend and prove to Boston on stuff to, for us with our population size, it's the equivalent of 15% of our municipal budget.
Now, we usually have a printout on that for, what is it, quarterly?
Yeah, it came out a couple weeks ago, didn't it?
I think we did, yeah.
Yeah.
Sorry, but yeah, so as of right now, we've hit that minimum number, so everything we're narrowing out is.
So what's that, what did that end dollars, 15%?
Uh, it's approximately 44.7 for this year. But we'll talk about next year when we get to the town meeting report.
Okay.
Speaking of state aid, we received our second batch of state aid for the year, 15,313.61, which brings our grand total for 23 to $30,579 and 44 sets. If the currently proposed budget in Boston is approved, we are on track right now for next year to get $33,839, which is actually $2,000 more than we were originally planning. So we're very excited about that. On a personal note, I don't know if it was because I went to too many meetings or not enough meetings, but I have been nominated to serve on the sales board of directors for the next three years. So hopefully that'll give us a little bit more of nudging power when they do stuff that we don't like, like the taking the email notifications and changing it so it doesn't say the title because I still think it's stupid, but they don't listen to me.
Congratulations, George.
But I agree. Just so you all know. And then theoretically, I'm gonna attempt to attend the MLA conference tomorrow down in Falmouth, but we're gonna see depending on the car. Yay. In terms of the building and grounds, the highway department has informed us that they will get to the, our lawn when they can. They just did it on Thursday for the first time this season. It is currently that I need to give them a call when the lawn needs it, and then they'll see if they can send a guy over. That's the currency of the play. Other than we are currently waiting to see what happens with the middle bit because that's the no-man lands because we nor the school know who actually owns the median, and the school's landscapers didn't mow it, and the highway department didn't mow it. So I'm waiting to see next time around if the school's guy does mow it and he sees that it hasn't been mowed.
Well, technically, the town owns it all, so.
But technically, the town owns it all, yes.
Okay.
The request to Diamond to work on the benches was submitted, and I actually have a correction because after I printed this out, the coordinator from Diamond called me, and they're actually out there working on them right now. They are already.
Awesome.
So it turns out that, as you most, some of you may have known, they're actually, we're working on a project down at Oak Grove Cemetery, or Beach Grove Cemetery. And they were stuck because they had to wait for a plumber to finish running something down there. Although they had a free week. So they are currently sanding the benches. I might have to run down either tomorrow or Wednesday to Grundy's to get more of the stain because they estimate it's probably gonna take about five gallons.
You had what, two?
We were down to like one, because we already went through a whole one, just those, first coat on those first two benches. But yeah, the coordinator is looking at it, and he thinks they're gonna be done by Friday with the speed that they're going at it. So they've got about, I mean, six kids and the coordinator watching them do it. But I mean, if you just go out there and look, they've already got, I think, three of them, three or four of them re-sanded last time I checked.
They're doing a fantastic job down at the cemetery.
I'm very impressed, very smart kids doing.
Yeah, they have with the gates.
And I have to say, it was really cool. The coordinator was actually using it as a teachable moment to talk about libraries and, you know, what's been going on at different libraries around the country. I was very impressed with it.
Would that be able to make it in our next newsletter that they did that for the library? Was that new, or is that newsletter technically Friends? It doesn't have to be.
Well, the Friends will do it anyways because the Friends paid for one of the benches, so that would count, just not, I'll have to check.
It would be nice to, you know, acknowledge that they.
I think the next one's already locked, but we can definitely get it in the fall.
Okay.
But I'll check it and see if we can get it in there.
So then we'll be working on a dedication, or we have to wait for the ADA walkway?
That's, that'll be up to you, trustees.
Probably have to wait for the walkway.
Should we invite them to the dedication?
Absolutely.
Okay, yeah, I've got all their contact information, so that's on the.
We haven't got to it yet, but have you got any update from the architect? I mean, I don't know who he's supposed to talk to.
I only talked to him, and he said he would be coming, but.
Yeah, he came by, but no, we haven't got anything back.
We don't know.
Um, I'll write him a little note and thank him and tell him we look forward to whatever.
Because when we get that, then we can approach the Mason guy.
Right.
And let him look at it.
I just wanna tell you, Polly, when we did, we had these benches donated for the outdoor amphitheater, the trustees volunteered to oil them, but it was a much bigger job than we could handle.
Has either two of them come out very well?
I thought they looked fine, but.
But they were a lot of work.
Yeah.
It's good practice for the kids at Diamond, too.
Yeah.
Worked out, right?
Then there were four that didn't look as good.
Well, four of them weathered, and the other two didn't weather because they had a stain on them.
Oh, of course.
That was good. We actually have a couple of the kids are actually switching their library cards over to us.
Good.
Very excited.
Have they looked at the year all week?
At least, yeah.
When Diamond kids have done work for us before, we've had their last day or whatever, we've had pizza for them for lunch.
Mm, okay. I guess we can settle that.
If that's agreeable.
Yeah.
And they have much, they've appreciated it, and they've come inside and felt good about it.
Could come in here and use this room to have lunch?
Absolutely.
Unless they wanna sit on the benches outside.
I mean, I probably, I don't want to sit on the benches, but they're kind of at that point. Yeah, I'll go work on that.
Okay. And this is the next one, this is one of George's personal ones, did he want it?
Yep, so Don, we have to thank as well because he did find a very nice, financially responsible changing station that we were able to put up in the men's bathroom. So now there's a changing station in both bathrooms because we had some occasions where there was a dad here with their kid, and there wasn't any place for them to change the baby without going all the way out to their car because we only had one in the women's room. And as a dad with toddlers, it can be an issue sometimes. So we were able to put that up, and my father was able to install it. So it's up, it's been great, really good, very happy about that. And knock something off of my five-year bucket list in year two, so. And that's what I got.
Ooh, next. Assistant director.
It's a very, very tiny book for you. So George already mentioned the first grade classes are coming the week of May 22nd, and we're gonna get them their library cards and do a little tour of the library and read a book, basically. I started working on the plan for the summer reading program this year, but didn't. So we're gonna do, last year, Linda had started it, we don't do the reading logs anymore, and we do a book bingo, so it's instead of just keeping track of a long list of books, it's like, read outside, read with your pets, read a book with a blue cover, you know, all sorts of little things like that. And the kids seemed to like that last year. We're gonna have crafts each week that they can either make here at the library or take home with them. We had tried movies last year, but it never really, I don't know, we didn't really. Yeah, so if that works, I was thinking of doing rainy day movies, so if there's a really, you know, nobody can go to the beach, they could come and watch a movie here. That's basically what I've come up with so far, but I'm still working on that. And I'm working on 1,000 Books Before Kindergarten program, which they do at some of the other libraries in the area now. I'm not sure which ones, but my cousin had told me about it. She lives in New Hampshire, and she and her daughter just did that. And it basically encourages families to read together at home, and the goal is to read 1,000 books before the child reaches kindergarten. And it helps with vocabulary, and it helps them get ahead in school when they're ready to go. So I gave you a little copy of the flyer I'm working on for that.
Nice. It's a really great program. We had it in Plymouth, and we've done studies on this. You can actually test out and predict with a scary amount of certainty how well a child will academically perform by third grade. So the more words you can get, the younger, the better, basically. And I'll never forget when in Plymouth, we had this one mom who was so gung-ho about it. We actually had a 10-month-old baby who had already been through the program suited to nuts three times. And it was amazing.
Where is that child now?
Good question, probably already, I was gonna say in Congress, but.
Well, people read to babies in the womb.
Yeah.
You know, the voice.
Which I wouldn't be averse to letting people sign up, the baby's still in here. But it's a fun thing, and then, you know, there's different ways to do the program. In Plymouth, we did it, is we had different cut-out paper shapes for every 100 books you read, and then you could put your name and put it up on the cork board. So as you're going, you're able to see your progress, but we'll figure out different ways.
I think that's gonna be the tall, skinny cork board we have that's against the shelving in there. I think that's what we're gonna do on that.
Okay, so it's a, it's a really great program. It helps kids learn, and it also boosts library circulation numbers. So we're very excited.
At the last meeting, you were talking about working in the YA area, redoing that area.
The labels are almost finished, Dan is just working on that.
I just wanted, I remembered that when we did the expansion, JP Morgan, who represented the foundation, came down to look at what we had done. And one thing they noted was a lack in the YA area. And they left us the remainder of the money. I don't think they ever take it back anyway, but they said it would be good to use some of that money in the YA area. So I just wondered if while you're doing YA, if there's anything you need, maybe you could use that money to enhance it.
There's not too much more we could do down there, other than if we wanted to get rid of the lounge chairs and buy a second, a second booth. Otherwise, otherwise we'd have to start throwing the tables away. And those were bespoke when you guys did the expansion and everything, so that would be a big lift to get rid of those.
Well, that was the need at the time?
Yeah, and then the kids do use them still, so it would be tough. The only thing I could see is like changing that over to a full lounge area and getting rid of the tables altogether.
Then you might have to serve popcorn.
Well, we have popcorn if we needed to, we keep it in the closet, but, or we did, I'll be gone by now.
I think we used it as the last program.
We did, yeah. The only, I mean, it depends. For that space, the only other thing I could really see us doing is if we wanted to put in some soundproofing in between the teen area, the children's area, and the library proper, like boxing it in. But the way it works now during the day when the kids aren't here, adults do use that space. So it's more modular, being able to switch back and forth.
At the time, the kids came over here after school because there were no programs for them at the middle school, but they, they had just noticed that we could improve.
Well, I suggest that the trustees just take a look back there around as well. Take a look through and look.
I think they.
I'm not even sure which area that is.
So that's why I suggested maybe we take a look.
But they, you know, they had indicated, so if there were anything needed in that area, we could probably make it better.
Are you thinking like traces of books or decor or?
Well, I'm just thinking new children's YA director, new ideas.
Yeah. It is kind of the lost years, those younger, that middle school.
Oh, they are.
Yeah. The more you can offer them, the better, for sure.
Books would be fine. You talked about graphic novels.
Oh, yeah, that's been, it's been challenging doing the, like creating that collection from scratch because it hurts my heart that children don't care about old-school American superheroes. It's like you can buy your books about Batman and Superman, they just want the Japanese manga, which is fine, it's great, you know, it's not about me, it's about what their interests are.
It's kind of trend right now, though.
It's the trend, yeah.
The kids are really going for that anime and.
Which is fine, it's cool. But, you know, it's, you know, it's playing a little bit of cow pie bingo, trying to, you know, buy different things, seeing what moves, what doesn't. I keep buying my romance series, hoping that somebody reads something sweet, but they just keep going for the action beat'em-ups, which is fine.
In that age group.
In that age group.
Yeah.
And the adult, no.[1763.74] But it's true. And we do know that that money is there. And I think I've talked about this before. Right now, we're almost really close to being maxed out in terms of the inside of the library without crazy money investment, like in terms of the kids' area. I don't really see too much more we can do down there without straight up replacing the children's shelves, which would cost somewhere between $25,000 and $50,000, depending on what shelves we decided to go with. So now it's more of doing a lot of work on the collection side, staying on top of that, keeping the books fresh and relevant and relatable to what everyone's interests are, as well as making sure we have what's necessary in terms of older books that people do still want and are interested in and available. Which is a continuing fun project.
What is the communication like with the schools? Is there?
It depends. You know, we're still making connections with some of the, the problem is there's a lot of turnover over there. You know, there's not as many teachers staying around for as long as they used to be. I've got very good connections with the high school media center because the media specialist and I went to UMass together. So we talk and stay in touch regularly, which is very cool because it's not in this report because I don't have it available yet to the public, but we received notice that they've gone back and they've digitized all of the yearbooks they had in their collection. And that's gonna be available to the public. So you're gonna be able to see all of the Westport High yearbooks going back to the 50s or 60s soon. And they're gonna make the web link available to us. So you'll be able to get it from not only our computers here at the library, but through the whole town, once it's finalized. But other than that, it depends on the individual teachers most of the time.
Are you looking at middle school or elementary school?
Well, YA is more middle, isn't it?
Yeah, high school, middle school, kind of, 13th, 18th.
The general definition is usually eighth, but it depends on the individual library.
Oh, you're saying it's eight in my eyes?
Eight.
Oh, eighth, okay.
Typically, it depends. Basically, what's considered middle grade is usually kind of like fourth through eighth. And then YA is kind of like seventh and eighth through high school. There's overlap and there's some bleed over between them. Some authors could be in one place or the other, depending. I mean, like our Rick Riordan books are all currently in teen.
They're all currently in YA, but they probably shouldn't be.
But some are teens, some are kids. So you can have them all in both places or either, or it's the flux period.
Would it be any advantage to Bonnie getting to know the assistant principal or somebody over there to try to get a rapport going? I mean, I don't know how it works, I'm just throwing out a suggestion.
It depends. I mean, I think it's more useful to have her, like right now, she's mostly been working with individual teachers. And that's the most helpful in terms of having the classes come over and things like that.
That's something that's never happened before.
We're making progress, so it's been going well. And I believe it's just something that'll be continued to build if, you know, there's a greater security and stability with the Westport Teaching Corps. That's the variable that's outside of our control.
I suppose you could ask the teachers what they might be looking for.
That's something that we're working towards. Right now, they're still in a no-defined summer reading era at Westport schools. So as long as the kids read something, they're happy. Which kind of makes it a little more open-ended because a lot of the time, a lot of the interactions between the schools and the libraries is around the summer reading curriculum, which as of the last couple of years, is not a thing. So we do have individual teachers who do work with us and have different books put aside for the kids or we make sure we have on hand. Although I still have a problem with some of the, they have a biography project that it's an expansive list and we do not have books in print for some of the people on their biography list. But it goes by the state frameworks, not by the local book horde, as it were. So that's a moving target, I guess you could say.
Okay, moving on, friends update?
Friends have begun collecting books, so if anybody has anything in good condition at home that are willing to bring in, no encyclopedias, no tapes, no cassettes, for the love, that is all, all that is holy, please no microwave cookbooks.
What come?
They don't move. Nobody does it. You know, there is a concerted effort amongst people that microwaves are of the devil, which, you know, that's your business, but please, I don't want to have to deal with them. And then they'll be collecting from now through the end of August. In August will be the paperback book sale and then the major book sale is gonna be in September. And then we are gonna be proposing to them at their next meeting that we add the New England Aquarium to our museum pass offerings. Since we ditched the Boston Children's Museum due to the fact that nobody used it the entire last year. So we pulled that, we did not put it to renewal and are gonna be asking them to switch over to the aquarium since that's the pass that we've been asked for the most and we don't currently have.
All right, new business.
Hi, Polly.
Welcome, Polly.
You caught me zoning out for a second.
Info dumping at you, I apologize.
You'll have fun.
I will have fun, thank you.
We already did be, I guess.
And just so you know, in your packets, I did include our formal bylaws for the board trustees. If anyone wants to review and see how we are constituted and all that good stuff. If anybody wants to go down a fun rabbit hole, I also have a lovely file in my office with all of the library-related state laws, which I love and have half of the good ones posted in the lobby.
Do you want this, the ethics?
Yes, please. If anybody hasn't done their ethics tests yet, please see me after class.
I did it.
You did?
I did it.
I thought it was interesting and well done.
I have done it since they redid it, so.
It's very nice, very smooth.
They contracted out and had someone, had an outside firm put it together this time, so I chose.
Really good.
Yeah, I thought it was nice.
And I got stopped on the acknowledgement section. I did it like five times and I never went down to the bottom of the page to hit next.
Took the last click, yeah.
Okay, we want to thank Carol for her years of service to the town and to the library.
And we're still getting service out of her.
She's on the Long Range Planning Committee. I'm gonna welcome Dan.
Are you still looking for someone on that Long Range Committee you had mentioned to replace a trustee?
You mean because Carol's not a trustee?
Laura's not a trustee anymore.
Carol's not a trustee.
I mean, Carol's not a trustee anymore, you're still here, sorry.
Yeah, I'm still here, you're still here. It's a comfort to know that.
Because we could have. We could have one, three? Yes.
Hi, Dan.
Hi, Dan.
Dan Sheen.
Dan Sheen? Dan, you know everybody?
I believe so.
Polly, Laura, me, George, Bonnie.
Unless I know my neighbor who just started, so. See you again. And I said to her, excuse me, you see her from a distance when she's walking her dog, but.
And we just wanted to welcome you to your full-time position.
Yeah. Well, thank you. It's a great honor to be here in Westport. And as you probably know, I served close to 30 years in the former public library system. And, you know, there's a lot to be said for the people in the university and for her, but I also, I always liked a small-town places like this where I know everyone by their name. People come in, they're often my neighbors, so I know them. It's just a very nice environment. I really enjoy being here, so I hope to serve you all for many years to come.
Thank you. Well said. Well said. Good job.
Do you have any questions for me? I have to answer any questions.
So you were in Fall River at the library?
Yes, I worked at the former main library for, well, about 28 years. I started off in the circulation department for about eight years. And I worked, after that, worked up in the reference area. So I did a lot of work on local history, genealogy. And I actually get to help a lot of authors and historians with research on their, on their books. Most recently, I helped Adam Makos of his book Devotion about Thomas Hudner and his friendship with the, one of the first black, I guess it was the first black Marine pilot and how, you know, Thomas Hudner actually won a Congressional Medal of Honor by trying to save his friend after his plane crashed. So that was, so it's great to be able to do research like that.
And Dan's also been able to help train us on how to use the Fall River online newspaper database, which has very helped with some of the other research projects we've been having.
So that's something I helped work on is digitize a lot of the old city newspapers because most of the history that you're gonna find about any particular area is gonna be in the city papers, the daily papers. And that's, that's what, you know, a lot of people doing research want, be able to go through those. And it's kind of tough when it's only on microfilm, they have to travel to the library to work on it. So that's something that Taylor Silver and I worked on when he was the reference librarian. We got our, that set out to be digitized. I believe ancestrydid.com did some of them, well, newspaper.com, which is subsidiary of ancestry, did that some. And there was another company that did some of the others. So I think at the time I left there, they were hoping to get the copyright, the rights to do more closer to the, you know, Martin Times, get to the 30s, 40s, 50s. This is, because there's a lot of important history and Florida's history at that time. But it also covers the Westport area too, so.
That's true.
Maybe a good resource. Hopefully, once that, that'll be also be digitized, so people will have access to that, so. So in any case, I look forward to working with you folks.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, George, give us a quick review of the town meeting.
So, town meeting, fantastic times, good times. I don't, I don't think any of you knew, but we actually were helping a little bit with some of the research and logistics side of the light plant development in terms of testing some of the different speeds for infine and that. So we were really happy to see how that went at town meeting as well. But in terms of the directly library-related stuff at town meeting, it was so much fun. So for FY '24, as of right now, we are set to have a $297,118 for our salary, $31,728 for expenses, which brings our total FY '24 budget as of right now to $328,843, which is 0.66% of the entire municipal budget. As a rule of thumb, in Massachusetts, most towns are encouraged to aim for 1% of the municipal budget to go towards the library, which we don't have, but we're getting there. In terms of percentage of the municipal budget, we are one of the lowest in the entire state. I did not stop to check what, where the number currently is because all of the state reports are usually two years behind. So I won't have that for another year or two, but it's, we're pretty close to the bottom. So as of right now for next year, our minimum. So, here in Massachusetts, we have something called state certification, which means for us to be a certified library and to be able to participate in the sending of books back and forth between libraries and for Westport residents to have full borrowing privileges at the other towns in Massachusetts, you have to be a certified library. To be a certified library, there's about five different criteria that you have to meet or surpass. One of which is being open a certain number of hours per week, depending on the size of your town's population. One is whether or not you have a director with a master's degree if you're a town above 10,000 people. One is making sure that the basic library services are available to the residents of Massachusetts at no cost. And then one is also making sure that an adequate percentage of your library's budget or the equivalent to thereof of whatever that percentage is, depending on the size of your town, is spent on stuff for people to take out from your library. That's what we call the municipal material appropriation requirement. So for us here, and then there's also a fifth requirement that your library's budget has to be increased 2.5% over a three-year average, which this budget also does fill that requirement as well. So with a town of our population size, we have to be open at least either 45 or 50 hours a week. You have to be open 50 hours a week to hit our maximum minimum, basically. You can be certified at either 90 or 100%. If you're certified at 90% compliance, you don't get as much money in state aid from Boston. If you're certified at 100% compliance, you get more money. And now that we are certified at full compliance, we basically have been able to double the amount of money we get from Boston every year.
No, we weren't. We weren't at full capacity before you came, right?
Correct. The last year or two before I came, we were getting the full amount of money because during COVID, Boston was fully certifying everybody regardless of whether or not they met the full conditions. So before I came, we were getting the whole pot of money, but it was because of COVID. Otherwise, that would have gotten cut in half when they went back to compliance. But yes, so.
One of the things you did was increase the hours.
Yeah, and those are the things. So we were able to, you know, basically just move the staff around. We had enough staffing to do it. It was just a matter of how to allocate the hours. And the staff were very helpful.
The search committee for the new director did a nice job. We'll have to thank Carol.
There you go, another feather for her cap. So and then in terms of, basically, a town our size, we're supposed to send either 14 or 15% of our budget, town budget, on stuff to check out. The town budget does not have any money in it for stuff to check out. So in that situation, we have to spend the equivalent thereof, that much money, on stuff to check out. So all of that money, so for next year, it's gonna be $49,326.45. We're probably, you know, I'm gonna shoot probably for like $50,000, just to make it a round number. But we usually go over it every year anyways, but we're gonna, I don't like going over it any more than we have to.
But you have to spend a minimum?
A minimum, that much, yes. We don't get penalized if we go over, it's just at least that much has to be spent. And that money can be raised through fundraising, through donations, through friends giving us money. So that's the friends, most of their fundraising and their book sales and their membership fees go towards our material budget, stuff that people check out, which includes the museum passes. Or stuff that people use inside the library, like the, we can have 10% of technological expenditures at their purchase for people to use in the library, go against that number too. Stuff like the public computers, the photocopiers, things like that, that counts against it as well. Except for our hotspots, because our hotspots, when we bought those, were made by the trustees' will to be Westport town residents only. So those cannot count against the material expenditure requirement because they're not fully available to other residents from other towns.
What were the other thing in the, about money, the $5,000?
Yes. So the other thing that we did was every year, the pro forma at town meeting, all of our fine and fee money here in Westport, for the library, goes into what's called a revolving fund. What that means is as money comes in, we put the money into the fund and then we can expend it up to $3,000 a year. Which is, it is what it is, that's okay. But we were starting to take in more than $3,000 a year with the increase in foot traffic and the increase on fines and fees collected, mostly on the fee side, less on the fine side, in terms of faxing and printing, all that kind of stuff. So we had put in a request to town hall to raise it from $3,000 to $5,000. It's not that the town is giving us $5,000 a year, it's that out of that revolving fund, we can spend up to $5,000 a year. And that was approved. So it showed up twice in the town meeting because the first warrant article was raising the amount that we could and then the second one was approving spending up to that amount every year. So for example, this year, if the current trends continue, we're actually gonna put more than $3,000 into the account, so we literally can't spend all that we put in this year. But that's okay because it doesn't actually get sent over to, the money just sits there, we just can't spend it. So next year, we'll be able to spend that as well as what we take in next year too. So the other fun thing, just so everyone knows, I went back and I looked at some of our numbers and since FY '22, we've actually increased the library's municipal budget 12.5%. Which isn't a big number, but compared to, you know, we used to only get 2% a year.
Where's that from?
That's the town budget.
No, but what period of time?
Since FY '22. During my regnum, as it were. Had a fun time watching the coronation on Saturday.
All right, review of library fine policy draft.
Yep, so in front of you, I have a draft for new renewals and fine policy. I was having a hard time writing it, just trying to figure out how to word it. So I had a grand realization, an epiphany, if you will. And when I worked in Plymouth, I used to get bored and I'd start reading through Massachusetts general laws, as one does. And I had a very fun realization. Who here knows in Massachusetts is, according to the Massachusetts Constitution, we can't not have the death penalty. The death penalty is constitutionally protected in Massachusetts. Now, you may say, but George, this is Massachusetts. We don't have the death penalty. Well, that's the funny thing. We have a death penalty. We just don't have any crimes that actually warrant the death penalty. So the death penalty is still on the books and it's literally constitutionally protected that you can't get rid of the death penalty. But there's nothing in there about saying you have to have a crime that warrants the death penalty. So.
Long story short.
Long story short, in front of you, you have a policy for renewals and fines for other overdue items and it just specifies the things for which have overdue fines. So, what's that?
Now, since, since we've done away with fines, that's going to affect the money in that revolving account?
Yep, so there'll be less coming in there, just because of, there'll be less in fines collected, but most of the other directors I've talked to that have gone fine-free, they do see an increase in donations. So we can also put donations in that account too, but I mean, we can just also put them in our donation account, so it's, you know, six.
Is the donation account considered part of that revolving fund?
No. Donation account, there's no limits against it, other than how much money is in the account.
Is this policy, we can take it a vote on?
Yes, if you would like.
Anybody want to recommend? I can't recommend, so somebody else.
I'll recommend that we adopt it as written.
Second?
I'll second it.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
We've been, Polly, we've been back and forth over fines for a while. A lot of the libraries are going fine-free.
Fine-free.
We had a policy that was, I guess with sales, people over 60, or whatever they were, they didn't get.
They were fine-free.
Yeah.
Just with town residents, so.
So it got confusing with sales, because some towns were fine-free, some towns weren't, depending on where you took the book out of. I think it's much clearer.
To be fair, except for these.
Yes.
Situations.
Or, you know, something, if we started doing some other special item, it's at the discretion of the board what to set for that item, so if we started doing, some libraries are doing, you know, cake pans or things like that, then obviously an individual item type could be added to this list, if need be.
We would do that before we brought the item in.
Correct.
Review of the meeting room policy.
This one's a little more complicated.
And why are you changing this?
So, we may or may not, it's obviously at the discretion of the trustees. We've had two requests for review or reconsideration of the meeting room use policy. So first up before you is the current policy as stated. The most important item for us today is, under Article Four, under policies, all programs, meetings, and exhibits must be free, a town board or commission may accept a donation for supplies, and the Friends of Westport Library and the Westport Historical Society may accept donations for their programs. And then there's two different pieces that we have before us, if you want to consider them. We have a request from the Recreation Department.
Does five tie into four, or are they separate?
Kind of, is five is as if we have an author come to do a book signing or something like that. They typically ask to be able to sell books at the event, and that standing rule is they can, as long as they donate one copy to the library, that's a standard practice in the field. But the Recreation Department asked to have an instructional class here, but they would have someone that they would be paying to teach the class, which technically, under the policy as written, I believe is a violation and will not be permitted. Although it does say a town board or commission may accept a donation for supplies, it does not say anything about accepting a registration fee to fund staffing. The Recreation Department does not have any town funding for their programs, they are all fee-based, so. And then they also had an inquiry about whether or not they could reserve the room for a rain date for one of their classes, in case they needed someplace to go during the summer, when they're having the tennis instruction out back.
What is the program we're talking about, George?
I don't know. The Recreation Director was not able to get me that email with the more detailed program description.
Kind of nice to know what they're looking, thinking of doing.
I know the first one, the, the main reservation was some kind of instructional class in some kind of activity, that's as far as I know. So the question would.
They do the same thing with the town hall annex.
Do they?
They will hire an instructor to come in and teach yoga. The yoga charges for it, but that's given, the town doesn't get any of that money. So the town's using the space that the yoga instructor is teaching.
Well, the town's contracting with the yoga instructor for the class, because the town doesn't have the staff to do that kind of programming in-house.
The problem we've had before is, not, not exactly with recreation, but we've had people who have wanted to come in with the expectation that they would benefit, like do a presentation and solicit, and it was always difficult, because if you allow one that seems appropriate, then you have to allow one that might not be. And that was always the issue.
I personally would want to approve something, since I knew what, what the event was.
Well, the question would be, you know, more broadly speaking, would we want to increase this exemption, so that if a town department is paying an instructor, and not just collecting donations for supplies, if it's a town program, would we want them to be able to use the space?
I would like to see that, because the Recreation Department does a lot of good things. They have jewelry-making classes and watercolor classes.
And they, they do all those the same way. They pay the instructor.
You pay an instructor?
Yeah.
No, you pay for the classes.
But that's how the instructor gets paid.
Yeah, the town pays them to do it.
But, no, if I take a class, I pay for the class.
Pay, you pay the instructor for the class.
You pay directly to the instructor, or you pay when you register to the?
My understanding, they pay to the instructor. That's my understanding.
So then it becomes a profit, could you put it up?
I raised the question with Jim Harnett not too long ago about, I saw an advertisement that they wanted to use the gym at the annex for yoga, and the cost was $40. I'm like, well, that's like, do we pay, does the town benefit from the use of the gym? Some places you can rent out your gym to the private people for a fee, and Jim says, you got to take that up with, can't think of her name.
Dana.
Dana. You have to take that up with her. So I sent her the same email, and she replied back that they pay the instructor.
The full?
The full amount. They pay the instructor to use the gym. So the gym is, the town doesn't benefit at all, the instructors, it's almost like a business.
So that's for profit, and, and one of the things about the community room was that it shouldn't be for profit. That's just, I mean, it could be changed, but.
But it's a service the instructor provides, and they're just being paid for providing a service, and it enriches the quality of life in our town.
I think we should get some, I don't know if we're, I don't know if we're allowed to do it.
You can. It's, it's up to the trustees.
So we should look into it?
We'll look into it then.
So basically, it's up to the trustees to set the policies for the room, I mean, if you, for example, you look up at Cambridge, anybody can reserve the rooms, but if it's a nonprofit, if it's not a nonprofit, then there's a room rental fee.
A rental fee.
So that way, if somebody is making, you know, a profit off of the room or something like that, some towns do it as it's a flat fee, some towns it's a percentage of the take. Depending.
But then you don't always know what, what the, what it is they're doing.
And that's the trade-offs, then you lose the ability to say who can or can't use the room as much.
Right.
And, and would it interfere with people using the room that don't pay for it, that use it as a community room?
I think it'd be, it'd be a different story if a bunch of people wanted to use the room every Tuesday night for yoga. That's a different story, than somebody paying to come and do it, take classes. It's like the people who use in the afternoon, they don't pay to come in here, no.
No, because it's for, that's what it's for, that was the goal. Can we table this and look into it some more for the next meeting?
Sure. And then just before we move off too much, the second piece is, we've had multiple town residents request a review of the same policy for the second half learning group, which we had before. A large percentage of the group members are town residents, and they very much were appreciative of having those classes here, but there, it's once again, very much a similar situation. The group is a nonprofit, but you do have to pay to attend the classes and the meetings and all of that, as a registration fee, and then also an individual course tuition fee, which in your packets, there is a printout to show you what the fee schedule looks like.
Now, that is, that's more, you know what, what they're doing.
Yes, but then it's back to situation.
So, if I may ask, what is the question to us?
The question is whether or not the board would be interested in either creating new carve-outs in the room policy where town departments could charge a fee, or town-sponsored programs could charge a fee for attendance, and not just for donations to offset the cost of supplies, or an exemption for allowing nonprofits who are providing an academic or community impact to also use the space.
And, so for you, which do you prefer? Do you think it would, is that, am I putting you on the spot?
Personally, I think it's, either way, it's at the discretion of the board. I mean, you can make the argument that both benefit the community, but both also would tie up the community room space, so that, you know, nonprofit groups who don't charge a fee might not be able to access the room as much if there is an influx of other people who, to be fair, there is a lack of meeting room space in town, and there are groups that are struggling to find places to have things.
And the benefit to having more traffic is?
If you look back in like the fall, we definitely had, you know, meeting room usage and foot traffic spikes due to second half, there, you know, we had, I think, two different group classes that were meeting here every week. And it was bringing out of town folk in, and it did bring back some high-grade patrons who we had drifted away from during the construction and everything.
She did, I think, run into something a little bit different, because you just mentioned out-of-town people.
Well, that's the thing, it's open.
It's moved if the residents of Westport would be, I think, considered for this more than anything.
And when we had those classes here, more than half of the attendees were from Westport, so the majority were still Westport folk at the time.
Do you have a meeting room calendar? I would imagine you do, but is it, is it public, like do you put in a request for meeting?
It's not publicly available, but we have basically a process where people put in meeting room requests, we check to see if we have availability, and then, you know, whether or not we do, it goes from there.
So something like second half, we're not talking about one class being held every week, we're probably talking about more.
It depends, I mean, they have different classes offered in different places.
Because what is, what is the, there's a limit as to how many you can book at a time.
I think it depends on the person, I think it's like three or four, depending, they have a rate where it's like you book one, and then for every other class you book after that, there's a discount.
No, I meant, we had a limit of how many times.
You couldn't book it every week for 52 weeks a year.
Right.
That's what you're asking.
Yes.
Well, actually, in the, in the policy, there is no restriction on how many times a group can book a room.
Oh, I thought there was.
If you look under Article.
It's first comes first served.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And I saw.
No restrictions are made on the number of meetings that may be booked per month, with the understanding that if a serious need arises for these spaces, the library takes precedence.
Yeah.
That's number six.
So that does mean that it could be booked.
It also means that you could book it.
Yeah.
Right. It could work either way.
But that's going to put, put you in a spot in a way, if they have it and somebody else wants it, you got to make a decision on whether you kick somebody out or let somebody in.
Yeah, and most of the time, what we do is if somebody already has it booked, you know, that booking stands, they'll want to move them somewhere else. We get, start juggling, that's always a fun time, as you want.
So if they were having a class for 13 weeks, no one could use that time for 13 weeks?
And that's basically the way we do it now with all of the meeting rooms, once they have a rooms booked, and we typically do about six months at a time, with the Majong, with the Bridge Club, those are all standing reservations, so those times aren't available to anybody else as of right now.
But they're also, they don't get any money.
Correct.
On the draft number five, seems to have been.
It got cut off due to the printer.
It's not that new printer?
No. I moved between computers, and the two different printers had different printing spaces, so it got cut off, I apologize for that. Basically, all that said was, basically just proposing if the trustees did want to allow for paid room reservations, it would be $2.50 per reservation, I went a little hard on it, so it was $2.50 per reservation per session, it's not just per, like reservation, like you put in one reservation for 15 meetings.
So you would recommend there's a charge for it, is that what you're saying?
If you wanted to, that is something we could do. $2.50 is what Cambridge charged for their meeting rooms, but they had a bigger meeting room.
I think I'd like to check with some other libraries and see what they do with that.
It depends on the library.
I'll talk to the Recreation Director as well.
Okay.
Do you have excess use? Do you have our opportunity to be used more often?
Depends on the day, so as long as they were willing to work with us to put classes or reservations where we don't have standing issues. I have promised Sue Costa that we won't bump or move around her coordinating club, because they had a really hard COVID last time. So it was a little bit tough the last time, because the second half, the last time we had them here, they had already kind of had the class schedule, and then they were trying to fit, find places for the classes, it wasn't the other way around.
It wasn't a class on Westport Historical, something?
No, no, it was, one was a film class, and the other one, I believe, was.
Russian literature, I think?
Yeah, I think so. Last time, we weren't aware that they were charging people, the flyer that I reviewed when they put in their application said the classes were free, but it was from COVID times, when if you wanted to Skype into the classes, the Skype was free, there was no additional fee for that. And when they signed the form, the form for the room reservation does say all classes must be free, you know, free to attend, but alas, here we are. But the people who were from Westport who were attending the classes very much appreciated having the classes here, and it did fill the parking lots, they were very well attended. So whether or not the community betterment outweighs the fee, that's above my pay grade.
Kind of seems like the fee's a little bit of a low point, I think, the fee isn't to you or to them.
That's the thing, that they're, they're making, although they are a nonprofit, you know, people are making money from utilizing our meeting room space, and the policy of the Board of Trustees has been that is impermissible.
How about one of those type where you must give us one donation of a course? Like the, the reader leaves a book, they leave a, the cost of a course, they donate.
Well, that would be something like if we wanted to do like 10%, but then it will be a matter of, like Polly was saying, you have to kind of trust them for, you know, calculating what the cost of attendance of the class was. And I think it might be easier just to have a flat fee, because, especially with second half, they have, there's a registration fee per student, and then there's the enrollment fee per class. So like, you know, trying to calculate how much benefit financially is coming out of the meeting rooms would be difficult from that angle, unless there's just a flat rental fee for the space.
And I thought most of those instructors were volunteers.
I believe most are, but.
So they're not paying instructors?
I'm not sure on that.
I think we should look a little deeper into the policy. I mean, are you saying we're allowed to charge for this room?
If you want to, yes. It's just in the past, the principle has been that we don't want to allow people to benefit from using the space, just like, you know, the town hall annex charges, there's no difference between us and them for the meeting room spaces. The problem is that once you get, once you go down that path, it becomes more difficult to restrict who does or does not have access to rent the room.
You should have done your policy that way, though.
And that's the thing.
When I worked at the school department, they had a very strict polish on who could and who couldn't use certain rooms. So classrooms are out, cafeterias were okay, gyms were okay, but, and there was this cool polish on everything you could do.
I'd hate to see people in town not be able to use the room because somebody else was paying for it.
I know the town hall annex charges for people to use that room.
Yeah.
But do they get the money?
The town does, yeah, because I know a group that plays basketball there every Monday or Tuesday night, or twice a month or whatever it is.
Yeah, ask Dana how, how that does work, because I remember paying, I remember writing a check when I went to a class.
I don't think you make it out to her, I think you make it out to the.
I don't, I thought it was town or Westport, but-
Because I know they had a whole, I think they have a whole booklet out already with the registrations for the summer recreation programs.
I have an email from Dana somewhere, but I won't be able to find it now.
So, are we tabling till June?
Yes.
But we don't want to let it go beyond. We want to be able to make a decision next time.
Next meeting, yeah.
Yeah, because I think if we're ready, for sure.
And then just so you know, as you go through your packets, that second, that second draft one is just kind of, I was spitballing what changes could look like to the policy if we wanted to. include numbers four and five. So, number five is actually completely new. The old number five got bumped down to number six. So, I basically just changed the wording, so it was "all programs, meetings, and exhibits must be free unless it is a town board commission or department event. A town board or commission may accept a donation for supplies and/or registration fees to support staffing." And that, the rest of it's unchanged. And then number five, it's kind of like either or, or an or, and or. "With prior permission from the Board of Trustees, a nonprofit may charge to attend an educational event hosted at the library as long as the nonprofit agrees to donate 10% of the total amount collected to the library." Or, and or. "With prior permission from the Board of Trustees, a nonprofit may charge to attend an educational event hosted at the library with a fee." And the rest of it got cut off, but it was at the fee of $250 per session or per reservation is paid beforehand.
It is or yours, right?
Yeah, that was just me just trying to put something down so people could kind of look at it and start thinking about what could be done. The $2.50 is just a random number that Cambridge uses. You know, I don't know what the going rate is for a meeting room space down here.
Who's a Cambridge friend? My cousin's a librarian.
Oh, nobody. I just, they have a really good website.
Oh, do they? I'm going to ask her about it.
Yeah, in the past, we were looking at long-range plans, and different towns have policies online. There's also a page for meeting room policies. And that's included in Cambridge's, in terms of how much it costs to reserve the meeting room space. But they have a lot more permissive use of meeting room spaces due to the fact that they have more meeting rooms.
More space, yeah.
So, that's the other thing, too, with us only having, you know, two and a half meeting room spaces. Because we have this room, that room, and then the history room, which, you know, sometimes people use that too sometimes.
Guys, move along, we're running over. Old Business. Laura, want to update us on that one? Laura, any plan?
We're meeting again this Thursday, and everyone was told to bring their questions that they want to compile into a survey. George gave us an extraordinarily complete list of questions that we could put in a survey to ask the town what they want in terms of facilities, which is not really on the agenda, you know, change of facilities. We don't have the money to add on or to significantly modify. But programming and materials, possibly website design, customer service-type questions. And we're going to, hopefully, this Thursday compile it into a fairly complete survey and then distribute it around the town. We'll have a link to an online website. We're, we'll also have some paper surveys at certain locations for people who aren't that comfortable with online, whatever. But hopefully, we will get some answers starting next month. You know, get it going, and find out what people are looking for in the library, you know, find out what they love, what they would like to see more of, or less of, or that sort of thing. So, hopefully, we'll have a long-range plan, and it'll work soon.
Okay. Carol? Carol was on the committee, she's still on the committee, but she's not a library trustee anymore. Do you think we should add another library trustee? We only have, we can have three, if we have four, we have to go public meetings all the time. So, we want to keep it under that so we can meet as we need to.
I think it's okay. I mean, at this point, with the size of the committee, I feel it's appropriate. So, we're just having to shift over from being a trustee to being a general public member.
Any opinions on that?
If you need any help, I think you should call on us.
Okay. You heard that.
Sounds good, yeah. We've got your number.
I like a good tally sheet, I like a good survey tally.
Well, the last time-
That's interesting, pie chart, just to what's going on.
The last time, Lois and I did it.
By hand?
But now it's going to be, I understand it's going to be done.
High tech.
Yeah.
Thank you, George.
Medium tech.
There you go, medium tech, I like that.
Yeah, I think we should change the agenda a little bit under Old Business. Let's have two things for committees, because we're going to have the long-range planning committee, we're going to have the safety committee.
Safety committees.
So, we'll have a committee section, and I'll squeeze the safety committee in that now we haven't met yet. Hopefully, this month we're going to meet, and that is myself, Susan Costa, and somebody. Maybe I didn't bring it. Oh, yeah, we haven't met yet, but we will. I'll find out who the other person is.
I think it's-
Huh? Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yes, I am sorry.
And forget him.
And I just want to make a mention today, when I came, I helped a little lady out of her car. She had her first walker, she didn't know how to open it up, so I helped her open it up. And we came in together, and I had to get the door for her because she couldn't do the handicap button. I think if she would have tried it, because she was so slow, by the time she got over, the door would have closed, because it was so far away. It's like five feet away from the door.
And you have to get around.
And then you got to get around the open door. So, we're looking at that. We've already looked at some different baby sliding doors or bifold doors that are automatic.
Is that under the safety committee?
Yes. Improved safety. Plus, the electric guys, I think, would work better. And along with that, would be some way to secure the door in case of emergency. Right now, I think, George, you have to go outside.
Yeah, so the, for some damn reason, somebody, when they set up the doors, when we did the addition, and then basically, there's two electric key locks. One inside the building, one inside the building. One unlocks the door, the second one turns on the automatic door opener. And they have to be turned in series, one then two, or you have to start outside and come in, but otherwise, one and two. So, basically, you can't really turn off the door opener and unlock the doors without having to go outside to do both. Otherwise, if you unlock the door, or if you turn on the door opener, vice versa, it creates a whole big issue. But there's no other way to lock the door without doing it.
So, you would do away with that door and put it with the automatic doors?
Yeah.
Would solve that problem. And you would be able to lock them from inside in case of emergency.
The reason we've been going into this is because some libraries have had groups show up and cause a disturbance. And we felt there was a need to do something to protect our staff and patrons here.
The other thing we want to try to do is work with the school a little bit, because if they have an emergency lockdown or something, how do we know about it?
Right, yeah, good point. They're pretty close.
Things we never thought about before.
Well, we just started, I think, last meeting or two meetings ago, making sure these doors are locked all the time. Because people that use the rooms used to come in that way. But you can't be trying to lock every door if you have a problem. So, now everybody comes into the front door.
But there, you can get out.
They can get out, yes. Or if they want to-
There's many doors to come in.
Yeah, if somebody wants to say, "Can you let me in?", they could open the door and go let the person in. Okay. Library amphitheater walkway in, well-
I think we're pretty much already touched on that.
Yeah, we're waiting on the design. The architect is drawing up a walkway down to the amphitheater. It's, because of the grade, it's going to be pretty big. It's like, I don't get it, 200 feet this way and then down that way, then down that way.
I think he ballparked at like two, it's like two, three, five, two, forty, fifty, tighter.
The architect?
I think so.
Yeah, okay. We had a guy that is willing to do it, but he want, he doesn't think he'd do it without, the town would accept it unless it was an architectural drawing, a regular drawing. So, that's Polly found somebody that's using it, and Susan knows it as well. And he came two weeks ago, three weeks ago?
Something like that, I can't remember. But, yeah, he, well, I was outside with him for a bit as he was shooting it and doing all the measurements and everything, surveying it. And I think he's planning on running it all the way up and connecting it to the sidewalk.
Yes.
Which I think is a good idea, and then to the back door and then down. So, it's going to be a pretty sharp, you know, at grade and turn. It's going to be pretty close to 90 degrees to get it down and around and then over.
It would be the same width as the sidewalk, so it would tie in basically coming down.
Yeah, and then the next thing would be, once we get to that point, obviously, picking material. I know there was some discussion about whether or not it's going to be poured or bluestone. I think it probably should be poured, just so it matches the sidewalk we already have. Because otherwise, if we have, you know, concrete and then it switches over to bluestone, I think that might be a little awkward, but-
Or maybe it could change somewhere along the line.
Or something, yeah, but-
Tied it in up, well, the concrete should be concrete, I agree.
Or if it's ADA, do you need it to be poured? Because you can't really-
Not necessarily.
No?
Well, the guy was telling me, the builder said, "I don't care if you do poured or blue dust, you got to put a footing in." So, you got to dig it down, put the gravel base and everything. So, you do the same thing, no matter which end product you use.
You can treat bluestone so it has enough texture, depending on what kind of finishes on it.
To spin, to move.
So that you have more grip.
We're not going to have any railings or anything?
Yeah.
So, we'll be able to grasp anything right around it without-
Right.
Going all the way around it?
Hopefully. But that's still down the road, so we can figure that out. That's what I got.
Any other topics, not anticipated? Anybody have anything else? Next meeting is already decided, June 13th at 2:30. Can I have a motion to adjourn?
Uh, 2:30?
I mean-
Twenty twenty-two?
Twelve o'clock. I was looking at 2:023.
I got you.
Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn second.
All in favor?